Yes, there is.
And there he is, see that? Light crowd. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council Meeting for Monday, November 24th, 2014. Please, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana. Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum. Councilwoman Piana has a work engagement, and I believe an excused absence would be appropriate.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Piana from tonight's meeting.
Support.
Support. All right, thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Pollocka. Any discussion or questions?
I would make one adjustment to presentations. I see that Commissioner Zach is in our audience.
How about that? All right, we'll make her presentation C. Very good. It's been moved and supported. You want to call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes.
Thank you. Just two more meetings, Sherlyn.
(laughing) Guys sneaking all around, switching things up.
Our first presentation this evening is a presentation by the Ferndale Community Foundation, and Dan Martin, you're going to present for the foundation this evening.
I am, good evening. Again, my name's Dan Martin, and I'm the current Chairperson of the Ferndale Community Foundation. And I'm here today that once a year, we're required as an organization, or we put it upon ourselves, to kind of report out on our activities and the general health of the foundation, what we do, what we're working on, and what we'll do in the next year. And we've done this in a variety of ways over the years, but we decided this year we would bring it to council so we could put it on the television and everything else to make people more aware of the, of the community foundation.
Joe.
Click. Not.
There we go.
There we go.
So, the mission of the Ferndale Community Foundation is really summed down into three words, and we focus on promoting growth locally within the city of Ferndale. We think this is a fantastic place to live, to work, to raise a family, and there's just a commitment in the citizens in taking an active role in improving it. So, we tend to focus on efforts that improve the quality of life around art, recreation, supporting local nonprofits, as we've done work in healthcare and, and supported education activities throughout the city over the years. From a historical perspective, the community foundation is now 11 years old, when it started in 2003, with a very generous donation of a house that was auctioned off, that planted the seed money for the projects. And through those years, we've contributed over $90,000 to projects in the community that work towards achieving our goals. And this group has been very bold in their additional fundraising. Over the 11 years, we've done everything from chili cook-offs to silent auctions, hot air balloon rides, direct giving programs. Our, one of our signature events is the Taste of Ferndale. We did Drag Queen Bingo this year. We've hosted community roasts and benefited from revenues from the Ferndale Pub Crawl and Blues Festival, and that's only a portion of the many things we've done. We bake cookies. I'm sure I'm missing all kinds of stuff over the years that we've put ourselves out there to raise money for. And our mission is really to cultivate growth through grants, but also, we are very proud of the fact that we further other seeds of growth. We are an organization that took a fiduciary role for Ferndale Pride, as well as the Clean the Ferndale Up event grew out of the foundation and one of its board members. And we are also engaged more and more in providing administrative and fiduciary support for the Ferndale Arts Commission, the Beautification Commission, and, and we're further growing our ways that we support local and area nonprofits. In 2014, we donated $12,650 to area projects and communities, either through grants or proceeds from Ferndale Pride. Affirmations received $1,000 for general operating. Ferndale Arts and Culture received $1,500 for the Music in the Park program that was resurrected this year. We put $650 out towards Beautification Commission awards, and Ferndale Rec received $2,500 towards three parking vehicles. Ferndale Youth Assistance received $800 that sent kids to camp over the summer. And Michigan AIDS Coalition shared in two different donations. They got a donation from Ferndale Pride, but we also invested $1,200 through the grants program for technology improvements, where they were able to purchase needed computer equipment. So, that's where the $12,650 that we gave away this year went. From an assets perspective, we currently have, there it is, $108,847.62 in assets, spread between savings and checking account and less our liabilities. And we're currently holding $1,645 for the Arts and Culture Commission and $650 for the Beautification Commission. And I want to point out, that says the, of the end of our fiscal year, which is what we generally report on at this year, so that's the end of June. From a fundraising event perspective, for the last fiscal year, the Taste of Ferndale netted us $7,085. Clean the Ferndale Up, which was not a fundraising activity, it's more about community improvement, operated at a slight loss, but we're happy to support that. Through June 30th, our Drag Queen Bingo got us $1,572 for the year. And Ferndale Pride raised $25,029 for a total net gain of $30,979 for the year. So, what's next? Ferndale Pride is coming up again on May 30th, 2015, and our micro grant application cycle will begin on February 16th and run through April 3rd with awards shortly to follow. And those are generally grant awards of $2,500 or less for area nonprofits. We, after a year's hiatus, we're bringing back Taste of Ferndale in the fall of 2015. And we're also venturing in 2015 into a more expansive grant program, in where we look at multi-year, larger seeded grants that promote areas of activities that we're interested in, that we can coordinate with other and partner with other nonprofits. We very much believe that grants are a policymaking device, and as much as we can coordinate those device, as much as we can coordinate those policies, we feel we're the right tool to help do that and move these projects and the areas that we support into the next step. So, who are these crazy people doing this, besides volunteers and great sponsors? I know we've got two other board members here today. Greg Pollocka is our treasurer and prepared all those great numbers for us. And Jeannie Davis is here, who's a board member as well. I think that's everybody who's on there. Sharon Chess is our secretary, Judy Palmer's our vice chair, and then David Holloman and Helen Weber also sit on the boards. And Helen, in particular, I believe was a board member from the very beginning, so, for the whole 11 years. So, with that, if you'd like more information on the Ferndale Community Foundation, my email address is there, dan.martin72@yahoo.com. Or you can go to our website, www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Excellent. Any questions of Dan? Just a congratulations, then.
Thanks.
Twelve thousand, over $12,000 invested in our community, and like you said, the intangibles of being a fiduciary and supporting organizations, outstanding year.
Yeah, it's one of the earlier groups I got involved with, and I know Greg's been involved in Jeannie for years, and I think it's one of the ones I'm the most proud of, that in the, in the amount that, that reaches out to the breadth of organizations and the support we can give. So, it's a great, flexible organization.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next presentation is by the Downtown Development Authority, and I think Brian Kramer is here to give the update tonight, right, Brian?
Must be a big update, got me out of bed to come do this.
Oh, my.
It was a long Saturday and a long Sunday.
I know it was, but a successful one, right?
Very successful, yes. We had over 4,000 participants in Festivale.
Excellent.
And we had no problems. It was great PR for the city.
Yep.
We made two news stations, so it was a great event. We'd like to start with the Holiday Hoof and give special, oh, my name is Brian Kramer, I'm the treasurer of the DDA.
Yep.
I feel like I gotta say something to Greg with all the cute Facebooks we're doing back before.[571.54][571.54](laughing) I love the Facebooks you guys do, by the way, it keeps me motivated. So, we'd like to start out, Holiday Hoof, and give special thanks, we had over 60 volunteer sponsors, or 60 volunteers who helped make it happen, and that's the most volunteers I think we've ever had for any single event, so cheers to them. Our top sponsors, One-Eyed Betties, Garden Fresh Gourmet Salsa, Buffalo Wild Wings, Bagger Dave's, Gauge Products, Giffords, Webster Engineering, so thank you to them. As well as many more, like Level One Bank, Credit Union One, Ever Dry, State Farm Insurance, Michigan Foot and Ankle, Go Comedy, Sports Clips, Green Leaf Body Works, Boston Tea Room, State-of-the-Art Framing and Gallery, and 359 Fit. So, it's great, everybody's jumping in and helping the city. Also, we'd like to thank the city for their help, the police, the fire really went out of the way to make it happen, the city. Just you guys are really making things clear on what you want with these events, and I believe it, it makes it easier and you cut right through it, so thank you for that. This is something that's dear to my heart, this Saturday, November 29th, it's Shop Small Business Saturday. You pick a small business passport up, it's got 30 different businesses in it, offering specials and savings. For every purchase you'll make at one of these stores, you'll get a stamp. Each stamp earns you another entry into a drawing of prizes from the downtown Ferndale DDA. When you shop locally, 70% of every dollar is reinvested, 2% more, or 2 times more than when you buy at a national retailer. So, shop locally and keep your money in Ferndale. On Saturday, December 13th, is the downtown Ferndale's Holiday Ice Festival, with over 40 ice sculptures, live carvings, hayrides, photos, lunch with Santa, and reindeer from 10 to 6. You'll see me and my four kids there with the Santa. Thursday, December 18th, is the Merry Moonlight Madness, our late-night ladies' night and late-night date shopping event. Stores will be open late. So, again, if you could really, this Saturday, take some time and see our retail and merchants in downtown Ferndale and spend your money locally, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian, appreciate it. Thanks for the update. Our next presentation would be our county commissioner, who's here to give us all the latest and greatest from Oakland County.
Thank you. Quick report. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the recent election. I look forward to serving everybody for another two years. And in the upcoming term, I am looking, and I hope Jeannie's there, looking for a new representative for the Senior Advisory Council. And this is a, oh, so I hope, this is a group that meets Mondays, 1:00 PM.
They won't know what hit 'em.
At the county complex. And they become the representative between the county and my district. I get to appoint somebody. And my present person resigned. She had been ill for a while and wasn't able to spread the word as much as I had hoped. And I look forward to having somebody that's going to come. And what they've been doing is, you know, they become the eyes and the ears in the communities. They take suggestions back to our county executive, plan events, they had different programming, and if you're interested in applying, let me know, or there are also our applications online, under the Board of Commissioners, you can apply. I do want to let you know, there was some hubbub about the Detroit Institute of Arts Authority, and there was a suggestion about disbanding the authority from the Oakland County position. Unfortunately, the DIA Board heard our concerns. They did take away the salary increases using public money. Some private, you know, donors came and did the bonuses. And clearly, it's a learning opportunity. They're not used to being a public entity with public dollars, and we asked for many different things, communication, and they've already started communicating differently and better. I heard from the head of the Arts Authority last week, we're going to have regular reports. Also, part of our Arts Authority millage included a lot of community outreach, and I don't, I certainly have received those reports in the newspapers, and they have done more inside-out. There's been bus transportation from the communities, and if we're not doing that in Ferndale, we should be doing it. Free bus transportation for senior school groups is part of the millage that we're supporting. The idea is to bring art to the communities and take residents to the Art Institute. We're investing in it, and I want to see it utilized. And then, unfortunately, I was unable to introduce the animal ordinance again last week. There's been some interesting changes, and it was something that I had hoped to do this term. Whether we'll try and do it on the floor or wait until January, I don't know. And part of the reason that, you know, I've heard a lot from animal activists, and a lot of concerns about kennels and how we manage them, and the safety of animals. There was legislation introduced at the state, the Puppy Protection Act. I don't believe it's going to be heard during lame duck, but if that can't be passed, we at least want better ways to manage kennel licenses here and hold people accountable if they're not, you know, meeting some basic standards. So, I will continue to work on that. Any other? I want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Any questions for Helene?
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thanks, Helene. All right, that concludes our presentations. Our next item of business would be a public hearing. Each year, we do a public hearing on our Community Development Block Grant funds that we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Ferndale gets $80,262 each year, and we allocate those costs based on what has been presented publicly. Derek, did I miss anything about that? Want to say anything else about the program before I open it up for the public?
No, no, sir. The estimated dollar amounts are similar to what we projected last year. The distribution we're proposing right now is consistent with what we've done the last two or three years. You need to hold a public hearing, and then there's a motion in the package for your consideration.
Derek, did something, excuse me, did something change on that where we could roll it over if we didn't use all the funds? Before, we had to give it back? Wasn't there?
You, it has a three-year, each program year's funding you can use for up to three years. If you don't use it at the end of the three years, then the balance is returned, but we, we haven't run into that instance where we haven't been able to spend the funds.
Okay, yeah, no kidding.
Yeah.
No, I know.
All right, very good. So, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody here from the public that would like to address council on the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2015. Yes, please state your name and, and your comments, please.
My name is Liz Byer, and I'm a representative of Haven, and I'm also a resident of Ferndale.
Excellent.
I just wanted to thank you for supporting our block grant in the past. This past year, from July 1st of 2013 to June 30th of 2014, we've served 53 residents of Ferndale. We've also taken 19 crisis calls from residents of Ferndale. If you're not familiar with Haven, we offer a variety of services to survivors of domestic sexual violence and stalking. They include having a court advocate who's stationed in the Ferndale District Court. We offer counseling services. We help people apply for personal protection orders, and by that, it's, you know, sitting down with them, doing the paperwork, which can be very emotional in your time of stress seeking protection. We have a shelter for residents. We have a 24-hour crisis line, so a lot of services that just any time of day, someone wants to speak to someone, there's someone available to offer support, assist with safety planning, and we do a prevention program to educate the youth in our schools about, you know, how to look for healthy relationships. In the past year in the city of Ferndale, we also collaborated with Affirmations Community Center to host Take Back the Night. That was held in downtown Ferndale, where it was an awareness event for sexual violence and ending sexual violence, and some march through Ferndale, opportunity for survivors of sexual violence to speak, to meet with other survivors, you know, share their stories, seek emotional support. All the services offered with Haven are free of charge to survivors, which is a great service for survivors to not have to worry about, you know, having to, you know, have their insurance billed for counseling or trying to have the money to come up for it. So, we appreciate the support of your community. And again, I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight and for your support of Haven. Do you have any questions about Haven, or?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Proud to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else from the public that would like to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Program for 2015? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of it. Counsel, what is your pleasure on the CDBG program for 2015?
I make a motion to approve the community block grant application for program year 2015 with the breakdown as follows. Code enforcement, $69,262. Public service activity, yard services, $8,000, and public service activity battered and abused spouses, $3,000, totaling $80,262. And to authorize a mayor to sign the grant application, so, recipient agreement, and the conflict of interest certification as responsible entity official signature.
Support. All right, moved by Pollocka, supported by Lennon. Any other discussions, questions on this item? Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted, thank you. All right, next item of business would be call the audience. Call the audience is up to 30 minutes now, although it doesn't seem like we'll have that many. More time if needed at the end for members of the audience to, to speak to any issue that they would like. It's not on the agenda, because we'd give you an opportunity to speak at that point then. You'll get, oops, Martha is doing her best. Jeannie, you can fight Martha for that. Three minutes, state your name and your address, and the three minutes is yours.
Jeannie Davis. I think everybody's got my number by now.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do.
And I'm wearing a couple of hats tonight. First off, I'm talking on December 6th, that's a Saturday, is the Holiday Showplace at the Kulik Center. It's from 9:00 to 3:00. People bring handcrafts, they bring little doodads for gifts, they bring little homemade things. Of course, the seniors have a bake sale, and we make all our goodies, and there's lunch served. And I think you get to sit on Santa's lap, Dan? Are you Santa for that?
I believe Santa's Santa for that, and yes, I believe that's true.
Okay. So, you get to sit on Santa's lap? And as I say, there's still space left for the vendors. On December 13th is, of course, the downtown Holiday Ice Festival. During the Ice Festival, we little old ladies will be at, stationed at Dino's. This year, we're selling cookies to, to help the elk, send things over to the soldiers who are overseas for things that the government doesn't traditionally give them. Primarily, it's batteries, flea collars, oddly enough, because it's just such a horrible problem, and they can't get enough silly string. Apparently, in darkened buildings, they, they spray it in, and if the building's booby-trapped, it, it kind of falls over the wires, and they obviously don't go in the building. So, they go through a lot of it, and it's not part of, part of their little backpack thingy. So, we'll be raising money for that. And of course, we'll be going up and down the streets with the basket. Councilman Pollocka generally helps us and goes along. He's our, what were you, our guard, or?
I have no idea.
Quite frankly, we were never real sure either. But last year...
Mascot?
No, I think you're our security guard. Last year, we raised 600 and some dollars for bedside healers, these little plush toys that would hook onto the hospital beds of children, so it really is a good cause.
It is.
And then, that evening, from 4:00 to 7:00, or 5:00, 3:00 to 7:00, is the Historic Commission's Historic Home Tour, and we have five absolutely wonderful homes this year. We have a couple on Drayton, we have the Stone House on Maplehurst, and we also have the Stone House on Marshfield. So, we're very, very excited about it. The tickets are $15. I have tickets if anybody wants them. You can get them at the community center, at the Historic Center. You can get them from Councilman Pollocka. If you want to call me and get them, I'll gladly give my phone number. Never does me much good, but I'll give you my phone number. It's 248-541-5888. So, I hope to see you at some of these events.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeannie.
My name is Martha Sunfliner. I've owned library bookstore at 169 West Nine Mile in Ferndale for almost 30 years. I also own 163, 165, and 171 West Nine Mile, and the private parking lot connected to it. I'm here because of the 360 project. There was recently an article in the Tribune which basically said nothing. We've heard nothing from the city about what's going on, so I'm assuming that what they first presented is pretty much what they're still going with, which I am against. I'm in the process of contacting a lawyer to represent the interests of the businesses and the residents who don't want to see this behemoth of a project take place. I hope that the city will be very forthcoming with everything they know, and that the project itself will, because many, many people that I hear from find this overwhelming and very unappealing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Moon. I live on Channing Street in the redheaded Stepchild neighborhood of Ferndale, and I've come to talk about rats. I know you guys have all been looking forward to this. I printed off a couple of things, but my power went out, so I've only got five to share. Can I bring these up?
Please.
Okay. So, essentially, what I did was, I'm going to keep one so I can work on it, so I, essentially what I did, I started this, this, I started dealing with this problem when my dog was poisoned. The rat problem in my neighborhood was so bad that, sitting in my backyard, they were squeaking two feet from us, just, you know, completely unbothered by us. So, then my dog almost died, and it cost four grand to save her, and that was the final straw for me. So, I started researching and actually trying to make more of an impact. So, what you see before you, I put together a survey and asked people to take it, and out of the approximately 19,900 residents of Ferndale, almost 1% responded. The map you see details people who claim to see rats daily or once or twice weekly, which, there are other responses, but I didn't include in the map, you know, the none, just because you don't see them doesn't mean they're not there. So, this really points out the hot spots, if you will, and also where people are using the poisons, which is difficult for animals. It kills the hawks, it kills cats, dogs, foxes, whatever. So, that's something, in order to reduce the amount of animals accidentally poisoned by rat poison, we need to look at reducing the rat population. I've been working with Derek in trying to get commercial-grade trash cans. If you buy like the regular Home Depot version, the trash can beat them to the point where the lids don't fit, so they're useless. The rats chew through all the plastic trash cans. Commercial grade is what we need. So, we're looking at that. Also, people have said that they're interested in, in buying those from the city. People have said they're interested in city-provided rat traps, because people are upset about this. They don't feel the city's doing anything about it. One of the other aspects of this is that, you'll see on this map, the little black marks where people report that their neighbors are hoarders or are letting their property become blighted, and we don't have a blight ordinance. I would request that city council look at a blight ordinance for Ferndale. And one of the particular problems in my area is the double fencing. We don't have any fence ordinances. So, we've got people building privacy fences inside of chain link, and that creates a little area where the owner of that property cannot get to, and it's a perfect spot for rats. And we can't get rid of it, because they don't have to take it down. So, I would like to ask for a fence ordinance, requiring that there is only one fence, and that if the neighbors to that double fence lot that is grandfathered in have an objection, they have the right to take down the second fence. Obviously, there are some other tips and issues in here. It's all laid out. I've only got three minutes, so. Here's the other copy of the ordinance.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Lennon, did you?
Well, I'd just say that education is the best tool to prevent rats.
Agreed. If you want to, you can.
Yeah, and we have a local pest company that can probably print you out some, I can get to print out some paperwork for you. But we do have ordinances that cover and cup us all blight, so, we just don't have ordinances blight. We have things that cover blight.
Okay.
Okay.
Because people feel like they're, people feel like they're not getting hurt.
We have orders that covers everything. We have orders covering youth standing right there.
Okay.
We can enforce anything.
People aren't aware of it, and when they call code enforcement, they're not getting this tort from it, because code enforcement says they can't go do this. So, I don't know where the gap is there, but this is a problem, and people are upset.
No, I appreciate it. And as you may know, I mean, we've sort of put Derek on the, the job, and he is working with you and others to sort of develop a strategy, so more to come on rats, unfortunately. But thank you, yes.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Anyone else from the audience that would like to address council? The consent agenda is items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled by council from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held November 10th, 2014. Item B is the approval to execute the employment contract for the police chief effective November 24th, 2014 through December 31st, 2015, pending a satisfactory performance review. Item C is the same item for the fire chief. Item D is the approval of the health and safety plan and hold harmless and reimbursements agreement with Gage Products and authorization for the mayor and city staff to execute the agreements. Item E is the approval of free parking in all downtown municipal metered downtown parking spaces during Small Business Saturday on November 29th, 2014. Let me say that again, free parking on Saturday, November 24th, during Small Business Saturday. Approval of the appointment of Joe Gaochow as Assistant Manager during Manager April Lynch's maternity leave, and approval of the proposed memorandum of understanding between the city of Ferndale and Mr. Gaochow. Item C is the approval to fill two police sergeant positions, as submitted by our Director of Human Resources, and finally, the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of our council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, is there any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Not directly an issue, but item E, just so everybody knows, on Friday, there is also free parking, because we actually consider that a city holiday.
That's right. And Thursday?
Yeah. So it's really Friday and Saturday is going to be free, and Sunday.
Black Friday and Small Business Saturday.
Yeah. So instead of going to the malls on Saturday, on Friday, come to downtown, where parking's free too.
And you get a free "I Love Ferndale" sticker at the Rust Belt Market on Friday, so another reading to shout, "Local," I'll just say. Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is, excuse me, the consideration to adopt a resolution removing out-of-state travel restrictions for council. Who wants to introduce that one?
I can handle that one, Your Honor. This was actually brought up by Councilwoman Piana a couple of meetings ago. Back when we were working on the 2010 fiscal year budget, and we were making a $3 million cut to budgets, council voluntarily cut its membership in out-of-state organizations like the, I...
National League Cities.
Thank you, National League Cities, I knew it was going to go blank. And quit attending conferences that were out of the state of Michigan. And as Melanie has pointed out, there is so much valuable information to be gained by attending some educational conferences that happen to be held outside of the state of Michigan, because as we continue to try to do more with less, I know everyone's tired of that phrase, but it is true, we are all taking on new jobs there. The administration of government as a whole is increasingly complex and regulated and technical, requires a lot of expert knowledge, and it's not something you can always get solely in-house. So that networking and educational component becomes very important to continuing to stay ahead of the challenges facing local governments. So she had asked that a resolution be prepared, and so we did so for your consideration.
Excellent. Then what is council's pleasure?
If you'll see, if you don't mind, Your Honor, the resolution still requires that you, as members, request and receive a majority vote of council, you know, to be approved to attend a meeting outside of Michigan. You still require authorization by a majority of council to obtain the funds to attend. You still have to stay within your budgeted amount for council training and education, so it's, you know, you still have all the same guidelines in place that you always have.
It's not a blank check.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to support the resolution as presented. Can I actually state that? Because that's a lot to read.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Lennon. Any discussion, questions? Pretty self-explanatory. All right, Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Finally, our last regular agenda item this evening is the consideration of a request to fill the city clerk position.
What? Kidding. Didn't anyone tell her first?
I know, right? As you know, Sherilyn has kind of her resignation, she's moving on to greener pastures and new adventures for her life. We're sad to see her go, but she is, was asking to resign, to be resigned by the end of the year. So what we have before you is, just as we always do, we need to fill position, a request to fill this position. What you have before you is an attached updated job description with everything that we need to move forward with recruitment. I think this is going in front of the Civil Service Board as well in the next couple of weeks, and then I will make a recommendation on how we move forward with filling that position at the December 15th meeting.
It's, just as a technical matter, though, and I should have asked you this before, but, I mean, this is a, don't you have to have a city clerk?
Yeah.
Theoretically, if you voted not to fill the position, could you even do that?
You would have to go and, yeah.
You'd have to consolidate or contract it out. Thank you.
And technically, you still have the position open. You just are, you have a position, it's vacant. You know, somebody was...
I'm not suggesting that, it just spits me that. All right.
Well, I deny her departure. I think that, I think she should have read the fine print in her contract, it says that you can't leave unless we say it's okay. I'll move that we approve the filing of the city clerk position regretfully.
Motion on the floor, is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Any other discussion? I like Greg's idea, but...
Thank you, you guys are very kind.
Certitude is, you know, over, so...
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. We'll move on to call to council. I see our good police chief in the rear of the room. Anything for the good of the community this evening, Chief Collins?
This is the time of year that we remind our citizens of what they're going out. We're going to do all of our Black Friday shopping, and the shopping that will there follow is to please keep an eye on your belongings and your purses and the things in your cars. But this year, we wanted to add something. We were doing a little bit of research, talking to some of the staff about some of the cyber things that have been going on. There is, the Michigan does, Michigan has a Michigan Command Center Executive, which is a depository for information for how to protect yourself. About $43 billion were spent online this, this past year for, during the holiday season. So I did have a couple of tips I wanted to pass on to folks. One is to make sure that all your electronic devices are used for making online purchases, have update software, security for your operating system, and your programs and applications. If there's any about the authenticity of a link or an email, please delete it before you open it. Be wary of amazing deals. If they sound too good, they probably are. Anything from a foreign country is usually a good clue. Don't share financial or personal information over an unsecure, that doesn't ask for a password, on a Wi-Fi hotspot. A lot of times, that is used by these cyber criminals, these free hotspots. It's better off if you use your cell phone, using your own carrier, it's a much more secure way to purchase things than it is from going to a free, free Wi-Fi place. Make sure that the places when you are online are legitimate. You usually know this by they have the SHTTP or a HTTPS as the start of their web, their URL on their website. If it has that S in the beginning or the end, that usually is a secure website, so if you want to use your credit card, it makes it, you can usually tell by a little piece of information. And there is a couple of resources if you feel that you have been brought into, into some type of a cyber thing. You can go to mc3@michigan.gov to report that. Also, there is some other places like the Internet Crime Complaint Center, which is www.ic3.gov. Those are a couple of resources that you can use if you think you've been victimized of some type of cyber crime. It's very difficult for a local agency to investigate and to prosecute, because typically, these things happen, even though you may have been in your home, where the actual crime occurs becomes very difficult to prove. So these are two, this is the first time that I've seen a couple of resources that are associated with the state that can, you can get some help there.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Speaking of chiefs, our fire chief is here. Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, cold weather heating safety tips. It's, that time's upon us, and a lot of people use space heaters, whether they're electric or fuel-driven, kerosene or other. Make sure you're putting the right fuel and the right things, make sure they have tip controls. In other words, they tip in any direction, they automatically shut off. Or if they're electric, they're plugged into at least a GFIC, so if they overheat the system, they'll shut down at the breaker in the wall. We had a gentleman working on his car over the weekend. He had an open-faced propane heater, which is open flame, and he started his car up, didn't have the seal on his fuel igniter, and ignited the whole garage. It burned down his garage, his cars, his cars in the driveway, and he's burnt and in Beaumont Hospital and been transferred to the burn center. So when doing work, it is a good idea, if you're going to work with fuels or something dangerous in the garage, heat the garage up first, then shut down all the heaters, and then do whatever you have to work with, fuels or explosives. That way, it's warm environment, but yet you don't have any chance of igniting anything. Also, keep an extinguisher right by where you're working. He got burned by trying to put it out and save his car. So just a cold weather warning, the colder it gets, people try using these safety heaters in a unsafe circumstance, and you can really get hurt if not careful, so be careful.
Including your oven, right, Chief?
Yeah, the oven should never be used for heating, because all, all devices create carbon monoxide, just your stoves and that at a low level, they're burning clean and that. But if your oven was dirty in any way, and there's any black carbon in it, and it's being heated, it will create a lot of carbon monoxide, so. And then a carbon monoxide detector is a good thing to have along with smoke detectors. They should be near events, so most of the time, people have monoxide problems, it is a broken heater bell. There's a big metal bell inside your heater, and the fire goes inside, and the heat blows across the exterior of the bell. If that's cracked, it's taking the carbon into the house and not out the exhaust pipe in your chimney. So those are good things to have, too.
Very good. Good information. Thanks, Chief. Jenny, anything from HR this evening? All right. Derek, anything else from you this evening?
I'm up in your office.
All right. Joe, anything from your, all right. Lloyd, anything from the DPW department?
I'm guessing. I just want to, you know, provide more information on curbside leaf pickup for the residents. DPW crews are currently working in the southwest quadrant. We expect to cross over into the southeast quadrant sometime Wednesday. We will be working counterclockwise. Once we're done with the east side entirely, we will begin doing spot pickup where people may have been late, or cars were parked in our way and we couldn't do it. Once we canvass the entire city, of course, that's weather permitting, because we did get surprised with a little bit of snow earlier, had to switch our trucks back and forth, so we lost a couple of days. We will be out doing the, you know, campus and picking them up. Once we're done completely with the city, which we expect to be the first week into December, residents may still bag their leaves and place them at the curb for their regular trash pickup through the second week of December, after which they would have to be delivered to the SACRA transfer station on Coolidge. SACRA's phone number is (248) 288-5150, and they will accept yard waste at no time through April. Other than that, Happy Thanksgiving.
Excellent, thank you. Sherilyn?
Nothing further tonight, Your Honor.
All right. April, anything for the city manager's office?
Just a couple of things. A friendly reminder that the December meeting schedule has changed for city council. We only have one, we have two meetings. On December 15th, we have a 6:30 meeting starts with the audit, and a normal, regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 o'clock. This takes the place of the two meetings we normally have due to the Christmas holiday. So again, it will be December 15th will be the only meeting day that council will meet for the month of December. We are looking for, a lot of our boards and commissions are still seeking volunteers. In particular, we're looking for a member for the civil service and for the police and fire board, so if anybody's interested in that. Both of those commissions are very low, low commitment. It's only about once a month for the civil service board, and police and fire is actually a lot less than that, maybe once a year if that. But we are looking for volunteers, and we need your help. Also, as you know, we've experienced high winds throughout the day today. DT has indicated that southeastern Michigan is without, 150,000 people are without power. Currently, we have about 276 in Ferndale that are without, without power as well. So we will continue to watch that and monitor that, and we have, there's no timeframe yet for return of service.
Thank you. Dan, anything from the legal?
Very briefly, I have exchanged some messages with the Ferndale Housing Commission attorney, and should, by the end of the week, have a report to mayor and council with respect to some of its rules of procedure and operating practices, and we'll have that communication forwarded to you by the end of the week.
Thank you. Counsel, our mayor pro town, Dan Martin?
Sure. Believe it or not, it is already the 81st anniversary of the end of prohibition, and our friends Laria and Monica Mills, as they, as they do to celebrate this event, have a Ferndale Goodfellas event on Saturday, December 6th, 2014. If you visit one of the following venues, which are Danny's Irish Bar, Dino's, How's Bayou, New Way Bar, Sneakers, Soho, Tony's Sports Bar, or Twisted Tavern, they're all participating in the event, and you'll be asked to donate some money to the cause to support Ferndale Goodfellas, which is a great organization that provides gifts and supplies to families in need during the holidays. While it's not required, we encourage you to dress in your favorite 1930s flapper, roomrunner, or gangster costume or outfit while you're enjoying the libations in the event. So come on out, have a great time, and, and support a great cause. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Lennon?
I just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving, and I'm thankful for my, having seen my son in a couple of years. He's home on leave from serving his country, so he's bringing smiles to family faces here.
Awesome, that's great.
Yep.
How long has he been here for?
Couple weeks.
Yep.
Back to Guam.
All right. Councilman Pollock?
Following Councilman Lennon, again, yeah, just Happy Thanksgiving to the staff, everyone in the city, my fellow council members. Make sure that you travel safe if you're traveling. Drive like you're driving everybody else's car, because sometimes they can't drive their own. And just enjoy yourselves.
Excellent. Yeah, on that vein, last Saturday, we lit the community's Christmas tree, and that was a lot of fun, and I hope when you see it, it reminds you to shop local, because our local retailers would really appreciate your business. This Saturday's a great time to start. Heck, this Friday's a great time to start.
I already got yours.
You're too good, man. Still working on yours. So I encourage you to shop our many wonderful stores and restaurants in downtown Ferndale. Have a happy holiday, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.